...up the EdTech department so impressively this past year. She's put together countless support documents and systems to support building staff, and provided self-paced Schoology courses that are incredibly helpful for staff. She has been instrumental in the new onboarding process. New teachers are coming in with accounts already set up and printers installed, which helps immediately with the chaos of the first few weeks of school. So at this time, I would like to invite our nominees and Megan to come up and speak a little bit about your nomination. And a round of applause.
Hi, I am Megan Genaquola, Behavior Interventionist at Stetson, but I also manage all of Stetson's technology needs. I have had the benefit of Rachel's support for about a year at this time. When she moved into her current role, she hit the ground running to support us at the building level. As we all know, the world of technology can be a bit unpredictable. I ran into all kinds of problems and odd things with the tech at my school, and I know I can count on Rachel to help. But she's impressive well beyond this. I can't speak highly enough about her communication. I so appreciate the thought and care she puts into the EdTech newsletters. They're jam-packed with helpful information for teachers. She also puts together excellent cheat sheets and online courses to help staff learn about new software and platforms. This takes the burden off my shoulders, and I appreciate it endlessly. All of this doesn't even include the countless other tasks she takes care of behind the scenes to keep things moving smoothly as possible. All I can say is that I can feel the immense impact that Rachel has had on this district, and I'm incredibly grateful for everything she does. She absolutely deserves this recognition because she truly exemplifies what it means to be fantastic in District 49.
I'm not sure what to say. I didn't have any planned remarks, but I just know, coming from the classroom, that teachers oftentimes just need that extra bit of support, and I'm just here to help, so it's a great honor. Thank you, guys. Okay, last and certainly not least, we'll wrap up by honoring our instructional coaches at Remington Elementary. We'll be honoring Rachel Jeffrey... no, that's not right. We'll be honoring Shontay Rue and Ashley Gates, thank you. Both of these phenomenal educators are consistently willing to step in the classroom whenever needed. They provide encouragement and specific feedback in nonjudgmental and compassionate way that makes educators feel valued while also holding them to high standards they strive to achieve. So if I can have... I apologize, my notes are over there. The nominee who nominated you both and you guys to come up here, and we will get your remarks.
Alright, good evening, and thank you Board of Education. My name is Raquel Warf, and I am a fifth-grade literacy teacher at Remington Elementary. Last year was my first year at Remington, and when I saw that I could nominate someone, or two people in this case, who are examples of District 49 being the best choice to learn, work, and lead, I automatically knew who my two nominees would be: Ashley Gates and Shontay Rue. As a first-year educator last year at Remington, they were superb examples of setting high expectations for the educators and high expectations for our students. Ashley was willing to meet with me above and beyond our PLC times. We scheduled times to meet together, and she gave me practical strategies to use in the classroom. I had the privilege of working and seeing Shontay step in where she was needed with a joyful attitude. They both exemplify positivity at our school and setting high expectations for our teachers and our students, and I am thankful to be able to be part of that environment with our instructional coaches. I'm so sorry. They are patient, humble, and strong women who set such a high bar for us at Remington. Thank you very much.
I know I speak for myself and Ashley when I say we're just so thankful for the opportunity, and we're really blessed to work with the teachers we have and our wonderful staff, so thank you.
I also wanted to say thank you so much. This is such an honor, and truly the greatest honor is to work with the incredible staff at Remington Elementary. They are such a blessing and so wonderful for our kids, so again, thank you.
Okay, congratulations to all of our nominees. Before we wrap up, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Lori Thompson, President of the Board of Education, for any final remarks.
Well, first of all, it's great to be back, and of course, to start off with my favorite part, which is Fantastic 49. And I was excited tonight to see that we were honoring students, somebody from technology and instructional coaches, that it was just a really nice overview of some of the exciting things that are happening in our district. I'd like to congratulate everyone who received an award tonight and say thank you for what you do for District 49.
Great, thank you, and thank you again to our nominees. We know it's incredible individuals like the ones you met tonight who make this district truly outstanding. So we will end the presentation at this time, and the board meeting will start promptly at 6:30. Thank you.
Welcome to the regular August 8, 2024 school board meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Devala?
Here.
Heil?
Here.
Lavier Wright?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Thompson?
Here. And would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Vote. Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson is aye as well. I would also like to welcome our student board representatives for the first regular meeting of the year. We have Bella from Banning Lewis Prep. We have Aleah from Falcon High School. And we have Jurial in the audience from Sang Creek High School. And in just a minute, we're going to move on to public comment. I just have to wait for the order and that'll take just a moment. And so, in the meantime, would you like to share what made you go for student board of representatives? And we could start with Bella and then go to Aleah.
Well, hi, guys. So, I chose to be a part of the student board because I feel like banning is very special and because we're such a small school, there's only one person who can. And I've been at my school for now thirteen years as a senior this year. And I feel like I've definitely grown up with this school and I feel like there's so much that I can help with as being on the board. And I also did it last year, which I'm very grateful for. So, I feel like there's a lot of insights that I can bring this year.
Hi. So, the reason I chose to be part of student board is because I am a part of my student council at Falcon. And it's really nice to be able to be heard and having a voice at that school. And being on the board is a lot, a step further on having a voice and opinion on helping the district become a better community and even schools as such as Falcon. So, that's the reason.
And Jurial, if you want to come up to the mic real quick, if you don't mind, and just share with us what made you go for student board, and then we'll move on to public comment. So, go up to this microphone right here.
So, I felt like I wasn't really doing enough with my school and like the district and everything like that. So, that's pretty much why I decided to sign up for the student board representatives.
We appreciate and welcome comments from our stakeholders as part of District 49's open forum. Please remain in your seats until called to the podium by the Board of Education Chair. Once called upon, please approach the podium, state your name and relationship to the district before beginning. Please speak into the microphone. Written statements may be left in the basket by the podium. We ask that you not address anyone in the audience and that your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner. To fulfill our values of trust and respect, we decline to create a forum for attacks or criticism against specific staff members, students, or other stakeholders. Therefore, with the exception of members of the Board of Education, superintendent or the superintendent, personal complaints against individuals connected with the school district are prohibited in this forum. Follow-up action items may be assigned to the superintendent. In accordance with Board Policy BEDH, open forum participation is limited to two minutes per person. It is the practice of the Board of Education to withhold any comment or direction to the superintendent until after all who have signed up for open forum have had a chance to speak. I would also like to make you aware of our stakeholder grievance process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our D-49 community and guides the stakeholders through the correct people and processes to help respond, resolve their concern, including as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the Board of Education. We encourage you to utilize this process if warranted, as many have successfully resolved their concerns this way. Thank you for participating in our open forum. The views and opinions expressed in public forum are those of the commentators and do not necessarily represent official policy or positions of District 49 or the Board of Education. And first up, we have Ann Easton. And then John Graham, you can come up right behind her. Is Ann Easton here?
Sorry, I had to charge my device. So, hi, my name is Ann Easton. I'm a former special education teacher in D-49. I have a degree in special education, psychology. I have a certificate in elementary ed. And I also have a master's in ed and education administration. So, I thought I'd just start with that. I am very concerned with the inappropriate bias that teachers and staff and administrators can introduce into the classroom with our very impressionable children. It's the superintendent that colors the entire district with his words, actions, and curriculum direction. Shortly after George Floyd died, Peter Hiltz, who was at the time the chief education officer, sent out a letter and Facebook post to the entire D-49 community, supporting George Floyd and BLM without the knowledge or approval of D-49 school board. And for what purpose? To influence the district into believing as he does. Peter Hiltz won the day. Social emotional learning raised its ugly head in D-49 along with DEI and CRT, which has popped up more than once. With Peter's influence and many inappropriate and ineffective SCL curriculums were allowed to be in the district. I know there were nineteen different SCL curriculums and they were all approved. Nineteen. What a budget drain. And at that time, the previous school board president stated that he had faith that the teachers would not teach anything inappropriate. How does he know that? But he did not say he had faith in the curriculums. I thought that was interesting. And Peter Hiltz won that day as well. Then there's the issue with the inappropriate books in the library. It seemed this topic has just slid under the table. Again, Peter Hiltz wins the day. I hear Peter is hard to hold accountable because of diffused leadership. I don't know what that is. Something I've never heard of, but it just allows Peter to slide his responsibility down to the principals and teachers. Peter Hiltz, you are the superintendent. The responsibility rests with you and you alone. So, let's hold Peter responsible and accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John Graham.
My name is John Graham. I am a parent and a committee member on the CAC and a few other things. I just want to remind everyone that everything we do, the end result is preparing students for adult life. And to do that requires a lot of cogs in the machinery. I recently attended Faster Colorado, which is a program to get staff and others qualified to law enforcement standards in the state of Colorado to carry in schools. I was joined by teachers. I was joined by superintendent, administrators, and another board member. It's pretty good training, all by law enforcement professionals, mostly SWAT guys and academy instructors. So, if you, when you come to discussing that eventually or someday in the future, I can help you out with that. As far as superintendent evaluation, I just want to remind everyone that our superintendent position description and evaluation was informed by the public when we did our surveys during the search. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about that during this break. The meeting, student achievement and success. For those who haven't been paying attention, we scored fiftieth in the state in third grade English language, arts, and math. And we put in a lot of interventions to increase that even more this next year. I wanted to talk about SCL since I'm the guy that was mentioned in the last speech. And we had parent, staff, everybody's input. And we moved accordingly to say that we do trust our teachers. I specifically do trust our teachers. Doesn't mean that there won't be someone who's rogue, but we have policies in effect and a superintendent that understands that and will ensure that we focus on student achievement and success and not what was just talked about. So, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Does anyone have an item, want to have an item pulled from the consent agenda? All right, now we're under the superintendent update.
No. Point of order. You've got a call for a motion to approve the consent.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, vote, please.
Devala?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye. And that motion passes. Now, we are on to the superintendent update.
All right. Even though we are starting the year, I've got several things that I'm going to report on and I'm going to finish with a special little celebration at the end. Just over a year ago, we came face to face with the reality that we were not going to be able to build a planned middle school in the location that we wanted to because of some jurisdiction issues with the Army Corps of Engineers and the developer. And so, we had to make a really massive organizational pivot to take those funds and use them on other capital projects. And that came about in something that just coincidentally was called Fund 49. And so, leadership for Fund 49 has been a topic of huge importance over the last fourteen months under the highest leadership of Heather Diaz in our business office and Bruce Brown coming out of our operations and construction offices. Bruce and Heather, along with a supporting cast that included Dr. Fletcher, our executive director for operations, as well as Dr. Troughtonberg, Ron Sprins in the business office, Spencer in the business office, I was involved early on, our partners from Wember, all of them worked really hard together. And this was a day that we circled on our calendar over a year ago, knowing that we had to invest into our own capital needs so that some things with the financial restrictions on those funds so that we could meet our covenants and retain the tax-exempt status of those investments from people that had purchased our certificates of participation. And I'm really proud to announce that we have been able to do a number of really critical projects. We were able to add supplemental funding to our transportation center, which is fully occupied, up and running. We were able to contribute heavily to the expansion for career and technical programming, the spaces that will now be part of the new wing at Vista Ridge High School. Those came out of Fund 49. Great work is happening to replace old and outdated and increasingly non-optimal modulators at Horizon Middle School with a new steel structure that will serve as the new sixth grade panther den. But we also did a lot of other projects that allowed us to get ahead of some of our deferred maintenance. And so, I know that Mr. Heil has been very involved in this and observed about it and other board members have heard presentations on this. We got to the day and we did not leave one dime on the table. In fact, we were able to be so precise that when all of the contingency funds come back, we're going to be very, very close to zero, which on a project approaching a hundred million dollars is a pretty remarkable effort in fourteen months. So, I just want to say a big thank you to those leaders in District 49. And I also want to say something that they will really appreciate me saying. Fund 49 is closed. No more requests, no more account codes. We've spent it. It's properly invested in capital improvements and we are going to go forward. For example, we fixed seven out of six roofs in the district. That's a, that's a pretty good use of funds when you fix seven out of six roofs on the list. So, they did a great job with that. Just as an update to the board, by the next time we meet, we will have preliminary school performance reports and a district performance report from Colorado Department of Education. Those reports are directly related to our BHAG, to pursuing a district that is achieving distinction with diversity. So, we are eagerly awaiting that result or those results for our schools and for our district. That information still in August will be preliminary. Then there'll be some analysis that we'll have to do and some additional process. But we are excited about that and I wanted the board to know that that is, that clock is ticking. We're just a little under two weeks away from having those reports in hand. I can tell you a secret, but I can't tell you the name just yet, but Colorado runs a process for identifying a teacher of the year. And they are down to a group of non-public finalists. But I know that one of those individuals is a teacher here in District 49. So, we have a finalist. You'll get to know their name before long. But that's exciting to once again affirm the quality. And we have had more teachers, teacher finalists in the Colorado Teacher of the Year program. Over the last ten years, we've had more finalists out of District 49 than all the other districts in the El Paso County region put together. And so, we've just had phenomenal teacher quality. We continue to have great, great quality, which is part of why, while all of the districts that I have spoken to around us are continuing to lose enrollment, there continues to be some kind of seismic shift happening away from conventional in-person public schooling toward homeschooling, toward online schooling, toward private schooling, and distributed methods of schooling. We seem to have stable enrollment. These are preliminary, early numbers. They will settle out over the next five or six weeks. But our trends are really encouraging. And part of what we really appreciate is that our registration team has been diligently working, even as we moved their office from the back to the front of this building, they're now in a location where they can provide easier access to our community. Their list, their queue of people wanting to get into District 49 was into the 140s at its high point. They worked really hard to bring that number down and every, every person they bring off that list is a person that's trusting us and choosing to come into District 49. So, I'm really excited about that. Those numbers continue to stream in. And so, those folks deserve a big round of applause because they are doing a humongous job for us. Thank you, the R-team. As Lori stole just a tiny bit of my thunder, we had our first meeting with the student board yesterday. We're off and running, really excited to see our high schools represented. And every year, the student board seems to set a new high And every year, the student board seems to set a new higher bar for participation, for leadership, for innovation. And we just, we have some great returning leaders that are going to provide continuity, but we also have a lot of, of fresh leadership coming from our charter schools, our operated schools, our, our online hybrid schools. So the student board remains a unique, distinctive advantage for District 49. We get so much insight about really critical topics, and I think that's helping us make better, more calibrated decisions that serve our students and, and serve our, serve our community. Two last things. There's a kind of informal metric that we keep track of, which is the number of vacancies that we have on the first day of school. So that day one vacancy rate, in a perfect environment, which never happens, every position would be filled, every position would be identified, and we would start the, the school year at 100%. I'm, I'm going to tell you that we're starting this year with a vacancy rate on day one that is well under 1%. So we're about 99.6% of our positions filled. That's fantastic work. So thank you to the principals for hiring well, and to other department leaders, and especially thank you to HR for processing and onboarding all of these people that are joining the D49 family and becoming part of our team. It's, it's the best day one vacancy rate in my memory, and I'm in my 12th year now. So that, that's a long stretch. I, I'm going to count that as another win to keep with the theme of winning tonight. And I'm going to finish with a win that cannot be attributed to me, but it can sure be appreciated in the Falcon 49, D49 community. And that is, if you'll pull this, this up, we are all fans of Sarah Hildebrandt here in blue. Sarah is in the middle. You can see she's 50 seconds away in this image from upgrading the bronze medal that she won three years ago in Tokyo to the gold medal that she won in Paris. And if you look past her opponent's left calf, you will see our own Vladimir Iswankov, or Izzy, as we all know Izzy, who coached Sarah at the Olympics. And so we have, when we talk about the high performance program, which Izzy leads along with some other programs, that's a program, a subset out of Spring Studio. The high performance program is contributing almost a third of our students at Spring Studio. That is a major choice that our community needed, and that's part of why we are the best choice. But Izzy is a huge part of why that program is credible. When you have somebody helping out athletes from the Olympic Training Center, from elite hockey teams, from dance and gymnastics programs, where the students are competing internationally and traveling continuously, they can't go to a conventional school. They need District 49 to offer the great choice of Spring Studio and the specific leadership of the high performance program. So we say congratulations to Sarah on, on bringing a gold back to Colorado Springs, and congratulations to Izzy for balancing the leadership he provides here with the leadership he provided there mat side. We celebrate you, Izzy and Sarah, and we are grateful for the leadership you're providing in District 49. Win, win. We're going to get tired of winning. So, thank you, and let's have a great year.
Peter, didn't we have one graduate last time, was for the most recent round of graduations who graduated Spring Studio with like 100,000 college credits? Slight exaggeration, but she had really racked up. Do you remember how many college credits she graduated high school with?
Well, we have had students graduate with an associate's degree, which is 60 credits. We've had students graduate with an associate plus credits, and I know the one you're talking about, I think was in the high 60s. So I mean, it's not a bad thing to start your four-year college experience as a junior with not a, a dollar of debt because you took advantage of concurrent enrollment. And so that's also been a part of Pike's Peak Early College and the Spring Studio program. Really proud to have shepherded those programs to where they are today.
Okay, now we're, now I know you've been back in school for what, 48 hours, 24 hours? How long? So what kind of update give them to each? We're going to start with Bella, if you want to give your, your experience over the past few days.
Well, so far, I, so I'm our student council president, and something that we talked about on the board last year that was also brought up at our previous meeting was how can we get more involved with our elementary kids? And I know for my high school, it's special because our building is sixth through 12th. So we're also trying to get more involved with middle school because it's not all about our high schools. And something we are starting next month is that we are going to be going down to our elementary school on Fridays and going to some of like the fifth grade classrooms, kind of helping them adjust to fifth grade and also coming to the new building, as well as helping out assemblies and just really getting involved and kind of seeing what they need. Because again, it's also about our school as an entirety, not just how our high school is doing. And that's something that I definitely wanted to do because I feel very passionate about my school. And yeah, and we've talked a little bit about, a little bit on phones as well, which is something Aleah will discuss more. But yeah, right now, I'm just kind of trying to get student council going and figure out how I can end my year with something better because I know last year personally, we did not have the best faces towards student council, and I just kind of want to change that and bring a more positive attitude to my school environment.
Thank you. Aleah?
One of the major topics we talked about in our meeting was phones, and you're going to hear this everywhere you go in a school district is about the new phone rule. I think for my school especially, a lot of kids are upset about what the new rule and about not being able to have your phone. But they don't understand the point of view from coming from the adult side, and I think that's very interesting, especially being on the board, hearing what they have to say about like their point of view and what they think about the new phone rule. And I think it's hard because I do like to listen to music when I work and do such things, but it's also good because it gives me more opportunities to connect with more people and get outside of technology because we are on laptops every single day we are working, doing all assignments and stuff. And I think it's really helpful to like kind of have a break and connect with new people and get out there and kind of connect with my teachers more and just kind of put myself out there. So I think that's one of the major topics I like to talk about, and it was really cool to understand their point of view and everything, so.
Thank you so much. And, and I'm glad you made the comment too about laptops. We had a prior board me, member that we really agreed with, and he talked about the amount of screen time, and that was one of his biggest concerns. So I know that Mr. Van Weren is very happy to see that we are launching this protocol and trying to reduce some of the screen time that we have in the district. Director Schmidt?
Didn't know it was my time yet. I really enjoyed our month of no meetings because I spent some great time with my family and my friends. I attended the El Paso County Fair where two of my neighbors competed with their goats and placed very well in their prospective categories. They happen to be D49 students also. Our family also enjoyed watching a pair of Swains and Hawks roost in our cottonwood tree out back. Our cottonwood tree has, has a big nest in the waytop, and many different types of birds have roosted in there over the past 20 years, and Colorado Parks and Wildlife have been observing that nest for that much time. The Swains and Hawks are fairly aggressive in protecting their young, so they're very strong and amazing birds of prey, and it's no joke when they swoop at you when you're out trying to do the gardening and whatnot. We were able to watch the hatchlings grow to fledglings and now juvenile hawks, and soon the whole family's going to fly off and go back home to Argentina, which is very interesting. It's a fantastic gift that God gave us to see this summer. I'm also looking forward to the new school year and want to welcome, welcome everybody back.
Director Hile?
Good evening, everybody. I'll break from tradition and keep it brief because I've been enjoying vacation, and I hope you all enjoyed yours as well. And I just want to welcome everybody back and wish everybody, staff, students, parents, a wonderful year to, to come. I wanted to add to what Mr. Hiltz was saying about Spring Studio. What an amazing choice. I know I chose it for my own daughter, not because she was in Olympic, in the Olympic program, but because it suited our needs. And it's one of the things that's really great about this district is the, the choices that we provide for students of all sorts of situations. I was also struck by something that I saw in tonight's Fantastic 49, and so I wanted to call that out. And that was the presentation honoring the Remington Elementary Math and Literacy coaches. I thought it was really refreshing that it was a first year teacher who was recommending them to be recognized. So what that tells us is, number one, of course, we know that the two of them are doing a wonderful job, and they're, they're being valued. But what really stuck out to me that needs to be recognized is that we're talking about a teacher here who was very welcoming and appreciative of all the, the help that, you know, eager to grow and learn and, you know, all of our adults are, are learning while we're also leading and, and working here as well. So I thought that was really wonderful to see.
Thank you. Director Livia Wright?
So I have a few things. I actually was able to go see the Transportation Department when I came back from my vacation, and I had to go get my son's bus pass for the umpteenth time. I, I'm pretty sure I'll have paid for about a thousand of them by the time that child graduates. But it is a beautiful facility, but it also, I think, is reflective of how much this district has grown. When you take a look at the old facility, they could fit one, maybe two buses in to work on at a time. And any day that they had training for everyone, there was no maintenance that could occur because they had to turn the area where they worked on the buses into a training area. This facility can work on eight buses at a time. When I walked in for the tour, there were actually four being worked on at that moment, which is more than they could have done in the old facility. And that's reflective of the fact that we went from a district that when I moved here, and that was a Transportation Department 18 years ago, there were 6,000 or 7,000 kids in this district, and we now have over 20,000. And I know we've gotten some flack in the papers or, you know, in the snide comments as people have seen their bus fee go up a little as well. The bus fee did not go for that. However, that facility was well overdue. And to see the mechanics literally joyfully using their equipment, working on more buses than they would have been able to use on before, and walk in and seeing people doing training at the same time that buses were being fixed, that, that's a, that's a game changer for that department. It's beautiful. And now Falcon High is starting an automotive program. There's some talk already of students being able to come over there and learn some of those, and once they've got some of those skills, doing some internship over there as well. Which brings me to the next thing I wanted to note, which has hit me as we were watching Fantastic 49. First of all, I'm thrilled Kayla is back. But not only is she a former employee who started her career in communications here, but she's also a District 49 graduate who has again returned to serve our community. That speaks volumes to me about our school. And then Megan Janicola nominated people tonight to be honored. She works now in our district as a behavior interventionist. She is also a graduate of District 49. So we are a family. Our, our students, when they can also come back to stay and be a part and, and impact that next generation too. And seeing some of our graduates choose to do that and choose to do it long-term. Megan's been here a while and started out, I think, as a para and then got her degree and then moved into that behavior interventionist program. But that's pretty cool too. And that, that is something that is notable, and I appreciate them coming back and serving our children.
Director Tevola?
So I had an amazing summer. I always do. And I enjoyed every moment of it with my daughter and quality time with my family. I also was able to attend a training for a coaching process up in Oregon. This is specific to my school, but it was preparing for my new role as an instructional coach for grades through through five. So this will be my fir- first year in instructional coaching. So I'm really excited to bring that perspective to my role here as a board member. Welcome to our new school year. We are very excited. Students and teachers have been well into a whole week of learning. This is the time of year where lots and lots of rules, procedures, and expectations are being taught to set up the students for success as the year progresses. We always go slow to go fast. Teachers are hard at work in order to kick off this school year in the right way. This is also the time of year when other school districts look at us and go, "Ha ha, your summer's so short. I can't believe that you're back to school already." And then they will be feeling something quite different when we get to October. One of the things that attracts staff and students to our district is actually our schedule, which allows for a two-week fall break, a week Thanksgiving break, two-week Christmas break, and a two-week spring break. This allows for more family time and vacations throughout the school year on non-peak times of the year, which is something that I envy because I do not actually follow that schedule. The first day of, with day with students was today for my school. In July, the board met in order to have a training on how to write resolutions, which I found to be very helpful and well worth it. We also, at that meeting, discovered the importance of being able to have longer times for us to discuss things in more detail and depth. So we are hoping to plan either quarterly meetings where we can discuss things more as a board. I also was able to attend the Transportation Center opening ceremony, and was delighted to try to cut the ribbon, which I was unsuccessful to get my scissors all the way through. I, I need to go back to kindergarten. But it was well, it was amazing to see that facility. I was in awe of what they were able to do on that site. And I know that the facilities people are very excited to be moving into our old transportation center so that they have bathrooms, for example, lighting, concrete for places for them to, to walk on. So it's going to be very helpful for them to be in that space.
Thank you. Okay. I was also honored to attend the grand opening of the transportation project with Jamie Lynn, and my scissors did go all the way through. However, I'm, someday I'm going to have to just talk to, this is, I know a lack of agency on my part, but I've got to talk to Mr. Dan Carroll about no double chin pictures, you know, that he really, yeah, I know. I'll work with him on that. Anyway, we had a few update meetings as well in July. And then I attended a teacher conference in Denver with teachers from around the country. There were a few administrators and a couple of other people that were there. There were teachers from District 49, District 11, and District 38 that I met. I'm sure there were some from District 20 as well. And one of my personal favorites was a speaker there. So I was walking with a friend of mine, and I watched Dr. Carol Swain get on an elevator, so I grabbed my friend, and I just started yanking her towards the elevator, and she had no idea what I was doing. And we watched Dr. Swain trying to figure out what button to push, and I said, "Oh, you're going to push this button because this is where we're going." And then we walked her to the event site. So it was a whole lot of fun. They also had James Lynn taking her leave most of the time. I was really thrilled once to meet Jonathan Turley because I really enjoy hearing him speak. But there was another attorney there who led a panel on legal issues impacting school districts, and his name was Brad something or other, I think. Oh, Mr. Tevola, that's right. You were, you were running that panel, weren't you? And so it was a lot of fun to go do that. I did enjoy having July off, and I want the students to know that I had a similar angst like a year ago that I, oh, a year, a week ago that I think you'll understand. It was like, "Oh, I want to go back." But by the time it rolls around, then you get to, you get back into the swing of things. And so I was also able to participate with some backpack collections to help other students get their school year started out, started out right. As the student board referenced, we are going to be rolling out our cell phone protocols. Just so you know, ours were developed by having a session, actually, there were more than one session, of parents, students, teachers, principals, and getting a lot of feedback. And so what we're going to be doing is we're going to try this protocol, and then we're going to see whether or not it needs tweaking or refinement after we see how this year works out. I love our student board. Last year, they told us how to defeat the system, and this year, they told us how to defeat the system. So I've got to tell you, we have some very creative criminal minds on Student Board of Representatives, okay? But I really appreciate your insight, and we have a really enthusiastic group, and it's good to hear. There was also a lot of positive stuff towards that protocol. Now, on to administrative updates, and I have two quick ones. First of all, in the 2023, 2024 school year, Skyview Middle School was honored as the best workplace by the Gazette, best middle school by the Gazette. two quick ones. First of all, in the 2023-2024 school year, Skyview Middle School was honored as the best workplace by the Gazette, best middle school by the Gazette, and platinum school of distinction by Jocelyn's Renaissance. Under Principal Mike Weider's leadership, growing a strong and positive culture has been an intentional focus in what he attributes to the school's success. "The level we invest in our people is what sets us apart," he says. When he stepped into the role of principal three years ago, Weider saw a need for improvement in the work environment of the middle school. He set out to dramatically improve culture first because he knew that student growth and achievement would follow. And he was right. And that quote is from the Power Zone leader, Teresa Ritz. Finally, I have an administrative update as we head into the new school year. It has been our practice as a board and leadership team to consistently attempt to honor and prioritize family values, parental authority, and compassionate practice when it comes to issues of protected classes and individual rights. So we were the first district to challenge and to decline to implement the full scale of authoritarian measures that local government attempted to mandate during COVID. Just so you know, in El Paso County during the shutdowns, we did have 15 teen suicides, which was a spike. Our response to the incursions of critical race theory and radicalized SEL was to take deliberate stance and to adopt policies to clarify that while we always value and support each individual in our system, we will not adopt or tolerate ideologies or false paradigms which are designed to undermine or challenge the values and the rights of parents. Our longstanding practice with regard to gender expression and gender identity has involved deliberate trainings and protocols designed to ensure that parents maintain the authority to direct their child's education, identity, and means of expression. We honor parents. While we have not made it a priority to make splashy headlines, we are deliberately implementing practices to reduce the use of electronic devices in the classroom. I say as I'm looking at an electronic device. Hang on. We adopted a comprehensive parent compact clarifying the multiple ways in which we are committed to transparency in curricula, mental health practices, character development, and other student supports. And we now will take a similar stand with regard to the record, the recent redefinition contained in a new version of the Title IX rules. As many are aware, the Biden administration directed the Office of Civil Rights to update the rules. The proposed new version, in part, purports to revise the definition of sex to include one's preferred or adopted gender identity. We believe this effort to be contrary to the interests of our families. Further, as many may be aware, current federal court efforts have resulted in injunctions in at least, I don't know how many states we're up to, the last time I checked, how many?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. It was twenty-one last time I checked. And in particular, a case out of the federal district court in Kansas has resulted in an injunction against implementation of the new rules for any school where members of certain groups have children enrolled. This particular injunction does involve D49. Given the legal posture of this issue and considering our own standards and priorities, we want to clearly communicate that we will not be implementing a version of Title IX that attempts to confuse biology and which would undermine the rights and protections afforded to young women in the area of sports and competition. We intend to firmly oppose efforts to redefine the essential characteristics of our student body. Please feel free to contact the board with your input on this very important issue. And that's all I have.
Ms. Thompson, may I make a final announcement? This is not exactly in the domain of superintendent's update. This is, this is one is more personnel and personnel. And I was kind of hoping that we would see a good friend here this evening. But although he is not here with us in person, I know when you get the chance, you are going to want to congratulate and thank Ron Sprems, who is completing a season of service with just absolute class and distinction. Ron leaves a legacy of great humility and service to District Forty-Nine. But he also leaves a legacy of real leadership in very difficult times. He has been just an absolute rock for us. And although we are, we are moving optimistically and rapidly to proceed with refilling that capacity within the financial team, we wish Ron every blessing. As he moves on, he'll, he'll be working once again with Brett Ridgeway up in District Thirty-Eight. We know that, you know, that was, that was a great partnership, and it will continue to be a great partnership. And so we bless our friends when they move on to good things. And so I wanted to let you know and say publicly how much we have appreciated, what, what great respect and affection we hold and will continue to hold for Ron Sprems in his service in District Forty-Nine. So thank you for letting me recognize him.
And I would like to add to that, that Ron carried us through a real tumultuous leadership shift time. And just, I know he was under tremendous pressure. We could see it when he would come. But he worked tirelessly to kind of be that bridge. And so I think all of us are so grateful for Ron. Okay, we are moving on now to action items. Can I get a motion for action item seven point one?
I move to approve the proposed policy CBI evaluation of the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Director Schmidt?
Mr. Hiltz hasn't had an evaluation since 2021, but he hasn't been a superintendent since 2021. This evaluation does need to take place this school year. So we really need a solid policy with good metrics in order to give him a fair evaluation. The state kind of makes our job difficult. They spent much of the last decade changing the standardized academic tests, like the TCAP, the CSAP, the CMAS. I mean, there was a whole slew of them. But because of that, a consistent and accurate level also changed, and an accurate year-over-year comparison of school and district standardized academic test results were negated. Therefore, we don't use them in our proposed CBI evaluation policy. Also, if I understand it correctly, within the next 10 days or so, the state's also going to be revising the criteria for the school performance and district performance framework ratings. These are currently the only objective academic ratings in this proposed policy. And I would really like to have a strong policy, a strong, fair policy. If state changes mean that we can no longer use SPF's and DPF's consistently and accurately, then this currently proposed policy will end up having little to no objective academic measure to use in the evaluation. Going forward, I would like to know how the state changes to the SPF's and DPF's will affect the evaluation process, including the levels and trends that are currently lined out in the policy. If this data is not considered accurate, what academic data will the board use going forward for academic levels and trends?
I just wanted to, we're going to go ahead and get a few more comments, but just, you know, that's one part of it. There will be revisions done, but they're actually in 10 days releasing the data on the SPF and the DPF. And we'll find out what some of the changes are going to be. But that is not entirely academic. There's a whole host of things that play into that. And that's one portion of this. So Director Lavier Wright, you look like you had something.
First, I want to say thank you to the people who put a heck of a lot of time into developing this. I believe the consultant was hired in addition to work with two prior board members, Ann Peter, to develop something that was going to be fair and accurate. I do want to point out that it really isn't an accurate statement to state that the testing scores are not used because our SPF and DPF are largely dictated by those test scores. It's one, it's not the whole thing, but a significant component of a district's performance frameworks are based on how students and schools perform on those tests, as well as whether enough students take the test, which is why those of us who have kids who try to not take it get the emails saying, remember, we got to get to 95% of our students. All of that information is incorporated into the SPF and DPF. So it's giving you a way to look at that information. But not only is it the test scores, it's also the growth on those scores. So I just want to be clear to our community that the academic testing information and evaluation by our state is included in our superintendent's evaluation by including the SPF and DPF. This policy was developed using a set of frameworks with an outside consultant as well, who had expertise in the area, and took over a year to develop, I believe, with both HR board members and that consultant working with Peter to develop something that was going to be comprehensive and more objective than what had existed before. There's a heck of a lot of data that's just measurable and is, did this happen or not? Is the data there or not? But that's all I have.
Director Heil?
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to Marie's comments, too, that, you know, Mr. Hiltz has only been our superintendent for one year. So changes in previous years, not necessarily relevant. But there is a task force that has been impaneled by the state to evaluate the performance frameworks. And so we can expect some changes. I would be surprised if we see those changes this year. And so we should have more good data to evaluate our superintendent at the end of next year as well as this year. And then, you know, there are, there are ways to balance out the deltas statistically. Like, we could look at, for example, on, you know, if the formula is completely radically changed, we could look at, well, how, how are we ranking compared to other school districts, et cetera, et cetera. So there's ways to, to true up. And that would just be a single year change. And then the next year, we would have, you know, year-over-year data to evaluate our superintendent again. But I also really want to emphasize, too, as I'm looking at this policy, we have six objective measurements, and only three of them are subjective. So I think we've done a really good job of making sure that we're going to be able to tie that evaluation to hard data.
And five of those are SPF's and DPF's.
Four of them.
And it would be, I wanted to hear from Director DiVola because she was one of the two board members, a previous board member and Director DiVola, to come up with this evaluation process. And I believe, I believe you also modeled it off some of the CASB protocol for evaluations as well. But if you'd like to speak to that, because I also understand CMAS data is also a component of this.
It's, well, it's a part of the SPF and DPF. So the CMAS data is in the school performance framework and the district performance frameworks. So that was part of the objective part of this. Yes, I would love to see this be put into place. Having a conversation with Peter earlier, this is kind of year zero of this implementation. So once we have this implemented and we have real data and live numbers, then we can be like, whoa, we shot too low. Or, you know what, this is not high enough. Or we can tweak it from there. But we have to have some ground level beginnings because it's been a long process and an overdue process for, because of reasons that were unforeseeable, such as the changing of our district model. So, yeah, I think this is a good starting point. I don't think it's finished. This is very much a work in progress that needs to be reviewed each, each time to make sure that it's accurate and what the board wants.
And I would like to add that we went from a three-chief model to a two-chief model to a superintendent model. So we had a lot of seismic changes within the district. We also have an annual planning summit every year. Some of our community members have attended the APS, and not just for the sandwiches and the fruit, mostly to keep an eye on their rogue board. We know why you were there. Anyway, yes, that includes now a current board member there keeping an eye on the rogue board. Anyway, so at the annual planning summit, when we set our strategic goals for the year, part of the superintendent evaluation is how is he carrying out what the board has put forward? It is not the board's job to micromanage the district or any specific schools. We are overseers of the overseer. And so we direct Peter with what we would like to accomplish, and then it's Peter's job to take it out into the district to help accomplish it. So I did want to reassure the board that at the APS, we're going to look at, because we will have our first evaluation in the book at that time. And once we have some of that raw data, we can also see if we want to make any changes or tweaks to it. So this is a starting point that was developed with a lot of different people to kind of get this thing rolling. And so even if they make changes, which I don't know enough about what the state is considering to change to the framework, when you look at the overall framework, there were other factors that play into the SPF and the DPF to include minority student enrollment. It includes free and reduced lunch recipients, which will be harder to calculate, I think, now that, that they have changed to the free lunch program in Colorado. And Director Lavier Wright was correct in encouraging people to apply to it because there's more benefits available to it. So there's some factors that we don't necessarily control that are part of that process. I think it includes graduation rates. And we've talked in the past about what can impact our overall graduation rates. I think absenteeism is included on that framework. And I think, Jamie Lynn, I thought I saw you raise your hand. Did you want to add something to that?
Yes, I was actually going to kind of halfway answer Deb's question about what do we do if it changes. I think part of it is, we are very hopeful that that task force is going to make the SPF's and DPF's be more reflective of how they're doing academically. And so I'm actually very hopeful that those more align to how we want this to reflect our superintendent's performance. And so I really hope this task force is able to do some really good changes there so that it does reflect more of what we wanted in the evaluation.
Is there any other discussion? Can we have a vote?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye. And that one passes. Can I get a motion for action item seven point two?
I move to approve the FCBC allocation and dissolution resolution.
Second. Do we have any discussion? Director Schmidt?
I just wanted to thank Trout for opening, for answering my questions in a very open way. It really, it was really helpful. Thanks.
You know, I want to address just one thing about this, just so the community is aware. So years ago, when we had, I think it was either an MLO or a bond measure fail, a group of builders in our community formed this nonprofit, this 501(c)(3), and they voluntarily were giving, depositing $1,500 per home. For every home they built, they put it into a fund. And in just a minute, to the best of the top of his mind recollection, some of the projects that have been funded by this incredible group. So it went along for a while, and they contributed towards, it was restricted to capital projects and to building classrooms. So I was, several builders began to drop off. But we appreciate everyone who ever participated in this because they didn't have to. And pretty soon, it was down to two builders, which was Classic Homes and Challenger Homes, with the bulk of, like I said, the organizational structure, I think, was with Doug Stimple of Classic Homes. So when I first came on the board, Rick was, Rick Van Ware was trying to keep this going. We even discussed ideas about maybe lowering that voluntary contribution. And to continue to get it to go, I offered to speak to other builders just to see if we could keep this alive. And it, it kind of just fizzled out. And they had funds left over. And in accordance with closing out their 501(c)(3), this will be the final gift. And we have a couple of projects that have been identified. So I just really want to thank all of the builders who participated and for, to Challenger Homes and Classic Homes for staying in it the longest. And just so you know, you were talking about the employment of, of our graduates. Our very first P-Tech graduate to get her associate's degree in engineering before she got her high school diploma is now one of the architects and does building plans and designs over at Classic Homes. designs over at Classic Homes. And so she was one of the first graduates at PTech. She also might be my second cousin. But anyway, I'm just so proud of the programs that we've offered in District 49, and I'm really proud of this organization. But, Mr. Hilt, do you remember some of the projects that this organization has funded within our district?
So, this, so Falcon Community Builders for Classrooms, FCBC, has just been a generous and prolific partner, really, for over a decade. And so if you look at some of the amazing athletic facilities we have at Vista Ridge, if you look at a significant part of the design and building that happened at Meridian Ranch Elementary School, we have great video scoreboards, which was a badly needed upgrade across of our high school gymnasiums. We have delivery vans that move around the district and provide safety and efficiency for all of the intra-district work that we have to do to move equipment and sometimes people around. And so, FCBC has had a consistent commitment to help the district fund things that are capital, that are tangible, and that have a very long yield of benefit to the district. And so, that's why we're really grateful, not just for Doug's leadership, although that's been critical. He's not only personally been a great leader of that, but he's also enlisted and recruited others to support it. And so, that's just, that's a smattering, you'll see FCBC's name on some specific items around the district, and when you do, know that the folks that helped build D-49 helped build District 49 as well. So, we thank them for that.
And so, as we finish this out, the final donation is $2.3 million. There'll be some holdbacks for legal fees to shut down the 501(c)(3), some accounting fees and admin fees, and it is a substantial gift, so I would just like to thank them. Can I get a vote on this resolution, please?
DiVola?
Aye.
Heil?
Aye.
Lavier Wright?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye, and that one passes. We are on two discussion items, and the first one would be 9.1, Department Update from Nutrition Services. Dennis, or is it? Huh? I can't hear.
Monica.
Monica. Okay, sorry about that. I'm still looking in there, trying to tell me. Marie, you are so soft-spoken. You've got to learn to yell at me, okay? I'm not getting older, I just, you know.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, community. I'm Monica Dyne Henderson, your Director of Nutrition Services. This is my annual update to the Board for this department. Well, I'm trying to click there, there we go. I always like to cover some background stuff about the Nutrition Services Department, because not everybody knows how it was set up. It is actually overseen by USDA, is authorized by the entire Congress, so Congress controls what our meals patterns look like, our wellness policy, how free and reduced applications process, what qualification income level gets a family on free or reduce. All that is coming out of Washington, DC. It is set up to be an enterprise fund, so we're a special revenue fund. Basically, it means we operate as a business inside the school district. With that, we are tasked to operate as a not-for-profit and not to take, when at all possible, assistance or support from general fund. And it also, with that said, means we have an extra layer of accounting rules, because it is a federal program. So, quick department statistics, we have 106 staff member positions. We actually only had three open positions at the end of July, so I'm really excited to say people are returning back to the workforce. We serve at 25 sites. Two of them are transport, 23 of them have in-house operational kitchens. Meals that we served last year, we did 343,251 breakfasts. That was an average daily participation of 2,215 kids eating breakfast within a 15-minute window around this district. Lunch, we did 1.4 million, which is almost 10,000 kids a day having lunch with us. That was, oops, I got to stop touching that button. That was a substantial increase from the prior year with free meals. For kiddos, we were up over 100% in our participation at breakfast and over 34% at lunch. End-of-the-year results, revenue, we brought in 7.6 million expenses. We held at, basically, really close to where we were the year before at 5.3, so we were able to make a net profit of 2.3 million. And there we go. Over the past years, we have been able, when we have a fund balance over our three months' operating reserves, we can give indirect cost recovery to the district. It's very restricted on how that happens and what you can look at and what monies can be taken. But with that said, this year, we're going to be able to contribute to the district $200,000. And at the end of that, I'm just going to open it up for questions.
We're going to start with Student Board this time, because I am assuming that you guys have, well, I don't know if they have Banning List Preparatory, if you have the school lunch program, but if you have questions. And then, Aleah, if you could give us some feedback as well. So Bella, do you have any questions or any comments about Nutrition Services?
I do not have any questions, but I have noticed, especially in my school, that overall nutrition has gone up a lot, especially now offering breakfasts. The cafeteria is like completely filled with kids, which is always great to see.
Um, at my school too, the lunch lines are insanely long, because of the free lunches that you guys provide and the free breakfasts, and I think it's really cool, because some kids aren't fortunate like that to provide their own meals, and I think it's really helpful to those kids in need, so.
Thank you. Director Schmidt?
I want to say thanks for the $200,000 right on. I don't think most people realize how demanding school nutrition can be. I mean, there's the physical part, you're on your feet. Food always needs to be safe. It needs to be, you just can't let up on any of that. Students want tasty choices, parents want nutritious ones, so there's always a balancing thing going on there. There's budgets, food stories, storage, conferences, and every day, just the getting along part. Not to mention, you know, the two fifth graders going toe-to-toe right in the middle of your dining room. Not much fun. I just want to thank you for grabbing the helm and steering the boat in the right direction.
Thank you.
And Director Schmidt, I would like to thank you, I know it's been a few years now, for your time in Nutrition Services, for helping to feed and take care of our kids. And I hope the community caught that number, average daily participation, 9,271 meals served. Now, kids. And so, when you look at that, I mean, I don't even like to cook for me and my husband anymore, but still, it's just phenomenal numbers. Director Heil, I thought I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate you again for your department navigating an extraordinary year. The first year of Healthy Meals for All just being flooded with new students to feed, and it had to be a monumental task to pivot and be able to handle that capacity. And so, just tremendous congratulations to everybody in the department.
Thank you, I'll share that with the staff.
Director DiVola?
Thank you again for everything that you do. I know there's a lot of logistics that go behind this, almost like a nightmare of them, so thank you so much for all the ordering, the regulations, the sodium content, all the different things that come into that, and then also navigating shortages or meal changes or like menu changes. I do know that's, can be hard on staff, especially when students are like, oh, I was, I was going to get this, but then this was my choice today. And all the procedures of getting everyone through the lunch line is quite a lot. So, we appreciate everything that you guys do and all of your 100 and, what was it, six?
106.
People who are on the front lines, serving kids.
Thank you.
It really is a Herculean task to manage, once again, storage, safety, food prep, service, and so, you guys just do an amazing job. And this is going to sound a little interesting, but it's something to think about with Healthy Kids Colorado. That is funded by taxing individuals and corporations. After they exceed a certain revenue point, they pay more in taxes to help fund this. So, under a free-market system, I would also like to thank those individuals and corporations who are paying more in taxes in this fund, whether they want to or not they are, and that it goes to help feed kids. So, just a shout-out to those who are paying additional taxes to help fund this program.
And Ms. Thompson, may I make a quick observation? You heard Monica say that her service numbers are up over 100%. What you did not hear her say was that her staffing is up over 100%. So imagine, if you had to have four meetings a month, and agendas that were twice as long, and you had to supervise and evaluate two like me, that, right, right! But Monica and her team didn't complain, they didn't miss a beat. Those meals were served, they were served well, they were served safely, they were served cheerfully, and she did that while attracting more people back onto the team. That's a profound achievement, and we're incredibly grateful for your personal leadership, your personal brand. Monica could go almost anywhere and support a big corporate endeavor or hospitality organization, but we are blessed that she's chosen to stay here, and the people that work in her department are her biggest advocates and appreciate what they're doing. So even though they had to double their workload and increase their time on feet and their pace of service, they have done that with absolute class, an absolute personification of the outer ring of our compass. They work as a team, they work with great purpose, they've had to be very innovative about how they staff and schedule, especially the lunch lines, and they've done all of that so that our students can get back to learning. So, we really thank you for being a role model and a champion of the culture of District 49. It's been outstanding.
Thank you.
And please stay.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Next items, 9.2, which was the resolution that we worked on after we went through the resolution training. I want to thank the Board. You guys are really adaptive. I ended up having to go to a funeral this, that same morning, and kind of stepped in just right in the middle of it, and so I just really appreciate the work that was being done and for me asking questions that had already been answered, but of course, I missed the answers. And so I've asked Director DiVola to read this resolution. This is one we're submitting that we're hoping CASB will take up, because they solicit resolutions. And so while we were learning this process, we came up with the first thing that we would like them to consider. So, Director DiVola, can you read that resolution?
Yes. Whereas Goal Academy is a statewide alternative high school that offers hybrid education, drop-in centers, and flexibility for students facing a variety of challenging situations. Whereas Goal Academy is also an attractive option for students who are behind on their credits, possibly due to life challenges, and are at higher risk for dropping out. Whereas because of the unique population of Goal Academy, their graduation data and academic performance is significantly lower than conventional schools. Whereas the number of statewide students of Goal Academy exceeds all of D-49's local high schools combined. Whereas less than 5% of Goal Academy students reside in El Paso County. Whereas Goal Academy, Goal Academy's graduation data and academic performance significantly and disproportionately impacts D-49's district performance framework. Whereas Goal Academy's data provides an artificial picture of graduation rates and workforce readiness. Whereas District 49 is committed to maintaining our charter in support of Goal Academy throughout the state of Colorado and is proud of opportunities offered by Goal. Whereas Goal Academy serves an important role in increasing the number of high school graduates throughout the state. Whereas students who earn a high school diploma have higher earning, higher earning potential throughout their lifetime and benefit the state of Colorado. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board requests the state legislature to develop legislation to report district performance framework data in a way that separates alternative education campus data from all other performance data. Be it further resolved that the Board will work with the district lobbyists and local legislatures to support such legislation. Be it further resolved that the Board encourages Goal principals and staff to reach out to their local legislatures to support such legislation. Approved and adopted this 8th day of August, 2024.
And I learned that, I was late coming in, I said, why do they always have to have all these whereses? And that was the question that had already been asked, and it was basically, because of this and because of that. And when I was at that teacher conference, I met a teacher from Goal Academy at the other part of the state. And so it was really exciting, and he was excited to know that we were the district that chartered Goal Academy. And so I'm proud of the work that went through this, you know, it was seamless, we agreed on everything. No, wait a minute, that's not quite how it went, did it? There was a little bit of spicy discussion, but that's part of the process. And so we're going to be doing another training, I'm going to work with Vice President DiVola, just to determine what the next one will cover, but I think it'll be reading and researching the resolutions for CASB. So, thank you for all of the work, and thank you for your input, Mr. Hilt. And if there is no objection to this resolution, it'll be moved forward, it'll be moved to action, or? Oh, is there any discussion about the resolution? Oh, oh, we get to do this all over again in public?
Director Schmidt?
I'll be interested to see how much difference it's going to make to break it out. I had talked, I had an email exchange with Paul Anderson, and he was explaining how AEC frameworks work differently than a traditional school. So I'll be interested to see, you know, as far as that went, Goal actually had a 58.7, which was pretty good, but it's got all those components in it, so I'll be interested to see how Paul shakes out in the end.
Director Heil?
Yeah, so we were talking earlier about how the state legislature is looking into changing the school and district performance frameworks, and this is something that we are very passionate about, because we have, you know, numbers that reflect poorly on the district, primarily because we are, you know, impacted so heavily by the Goal numbers and the unique nature of Goal. But I also, I have a motion to amend, but I think you're going to like this one. So, when we were discussing this one, we were talking about how it's a great school that many students and their parents are choosing for reasons that have nothing to do with, you know, challenging situations. And so, on that basis, when I read the first statement that we put together, the first whereas, I thought, I really want to eliminate any negative inferences on that first one. I want our first statement to be a positive one. So, I propose that we modify that to, from, "and flexibility for students facing a variety of challenging situations," to, "and flexibility that benefits students in a variety of situations." That way, there's no negativity in that statement. So, so the first, the first whereas would then read, whereas, Goal Academy is a statewide alternative high school that offers hybrid education, drop-in centers, and flexibility that benefits students in a variety of situations.
I like the change. Now, I don't want you guys to think that during this resolution training, that Mike and I were throwing bagels at one another. It didn't get quite to that extent. The conversation got a little spicy, but it was still good, because that's another point I'd like to make, and why I really like your change, yes, I'm saying it. Because we actually called a parent of a Goal graduate, turns out that they had two children that are now adults, that chose Goal for the flexibility. There was no- There was no challenging situations. They chose Goal because it fit with their lifestyle. And so it is true that, and Bella, you remember some of the students we had that were on student board from Goal. So there, there are a variety of kids that choose it for one reason or another, and some it is a lifeline. So it serves two purposes there. And then a quick apology to the board. It was something that I actually obtained so that I could share with the board. I just had forgotten to forward it to you. But I have the graduation speeches from the last graduation. And I've got to tell you, they were phenomenal. And Dr. Gutierrez was there for that, and she got to hear those. And we had to kind of pass around the Kleenexes. And then we graduated to rolls of paper towels, I think. But it was really, really moving. So I want to share those graduation speeches with you. Are there any objections?
Yeah, so we have a motion to amend. Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Any other discussion? Yeah.
So, excuse me, Brad Miller speaking. This is a discussion item. So what we're doing here is recommending some revisions that would be pertinent to a vote at the next meeting.
That's caught me before. Yeah. Sorry.
So it sounds like we have a consensus for an edit to move it forward and it'll still be moved forward. Say yes into the microphone so we can capture you.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, and that will be moved forward for action.
There only two people had an opportunity to comment.
Oh, sorry about that. I apologize. Director Livia Wright?
So this, this is beautiful as it is. And I was not a part of putting it together because I was out of state on vacation, enjoying my family. But Goal is in my heart and always has been and has been from the day we voted to bring it on. I was a part of the board that brought it into our district. And this is a separate argument. They wouldn't be for this. But if you're talking about presenting things later as a part of the CASB resolutions related to this, part of the issue I have with the way in which Goal impacts our ratings is it also discourages schools, discourages districts from offering programs that are non-traditional that will help students who struggle. Whether it's an AEC at the high school level or whether it's starting something like Allies. Starting Allies was difficult. And you'll notice that although it's a phenomenal program that is changing kids' lives, the only replica is a charter school. And that's because it concentrates on, it concentrates students who are gonna have lower test scores into one building, which means that school's gonna struggle and get nailed on improvement plans, even though it's a hundred percent predictable that if you're admitting kids at second grade for being dyslexic, and therefore they're already gonna be significantly reading deficient. Obviously, when they test in third grade, they're gonna be lower performing. That doesn't mean the school's not doing its job. The whole purpose of the school is to help those kids learn and not fall out of the system. But the current system of district evaluation discourages districts from taking that risk and from setting up programs that could benefit kids who cha, who have challenges that make it harder to achieve their potential in a traditional model. And I think that that is an argument that needs to be made loud and clear. And when we go to CASB, emphasizing that part and de-emphasizing Goal a little will help you because there are districts who resent us because of Goal. Having, having, because, because they lose money when students transfer there. But it's true. Having been at, at a part of that process for multiple years, the kind of comments that I just kind of kept my ears open and my mouth shut as I listened to them slam us. And most of the people didn't know I was one of the people helping to keep Goal alive. But figuring out how to finesse that part as we try to get more districts to buy in will be important too. This in and of itself, though, is perfect for taking to the legislature, taking to our lobbyists, all of those pieces because it is an incredibly important program and it's one that benefits my family as well.
And I'd like to, just a quick note. Director Livia Wright has forgotten more things about this district than I will probably ever learn. And I'm really glad she brought that up. And I will also share with the board the comments that I made when the county commissioners were doing a resolution to honor charter schools. And without mentioning by name, I actually talked about high-performance charter schools. And I mentioned, without using names, because I, you can't mention one of our charter schools without listing all of them. I mentioned Allies and Goal by reference. And so Bella and Aleah, just so you know, Allies, the Little Dragons, that is a K through three school geared towards dyslexic students. Two through five. See, I've already gotten the, I told you, she's forgotten more than I'll ever remember. But when the student board, as they work on their plans to visit elementary schools, I do encourage, if we can, to also try to set up something with Allies. And so what do you guys think about this? Because here we have a two-through-five school geared at dyslexics. Then we have an alternative high school that can meet a variety of needs. So I'd like to hear what you guys have to share as far as both the resolution and some of the options we have to meet kids where they're at.
I think it's very, I think we should include those schools because they are regular schools that people attend to, even if they're dyslexic or have disabilities that they need to work on. But I think it should be part of the plan to include those schools in daily topics, daily conversations we have to help them resolution. So I think it's a very cool idea and very interesting. And I haven't heard of that school that you've talked about. I think I have heard of Goal. And I think, I, I think I've passed by it a couple of times. But I haven't heard of the two-through-five, like you guys said. I have not heard of that school. But I think it would be a very interesting idea to include them into the plan.
I also agree, and I think that we should include them because regardless of the school, we are all a part of the same district. And I feel like we shouldn't just keep people out of it. And I definitely think that their voices should be heard, regardless of what school they attend.
And by the way, Allies is on the same campus as Odyssey. So it's incredibly easy because it began as a, as a program within Odyssey Elementary, that that principal had a vision of it then growing into its own school. So those, the folks from the Power Zone who are incorporating Odyssey, it would be very natural. They're, they're literally connected by hallway. So it's real easy to, to visit both at the same time.
And you will really, really enjoy those Dragons. That is a fun group of kids. And I got to go to their advancement ceremony. And it was deeply moving, some of, there was a few tears on Dragons who were a little afraid to, you know, move on to something different. But I think that Allies does such an amazing job of preparing them as they roll into an environment where they can take some of the tools they've picked up from the school. So where they may not enhance us on our school performance framework, I see it as God's work. It's really incredible to meet kids where they're at. So thank you for your input. Did we agree to move it forward then? We have, and we have, we don't have a second. Oh, we have policy and procedure review. Lynette, I almost skipped you.
I wouldn't have minded. Hello. So we just have all the policies that have been reviewed over the summer. There's some minor changes to the majority of them. The ones that do have major changes are legal that CASB sent in this huge revision, special update. So if you have any questions, go ahead and ask away.
Director Schmidt?
I'm reluctant to move forward twenty-eight items. That's a lot. I know. I know. You've heard this. I personally would almost prefer not to have summer break to not have twenty-eight items in front of us because I kind of take it seriously. And I like to read it through, and I like to understand it. And I can't, I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it. So I've learned a thing or two, though. However, thank you very much for letting me know about the timetables and what to look forward to. So that's gonna help the whole district in the future. It's gonna help everybody with all my many questions.
Just follow that spreadsheet I showed you. You'll see that.
Thank you.
Director Livia Wright?
I just, if you'd like some ideas or advice on how to get through that many, because when I first began on the board, Tammy can attest to this. Our packets were paper, and they were four to five hundred pages long. And we had five days to read them. So it was not a lot of fun. This technology makes it phenomenal. When they're under Lynette's piece, there's two aspects to the, you're, it's not a full-on policy review. You're only looking at the minor changes that are made. So if there's something else that isn't in green or red that you're worried about, that actually isn't even up for discussion. So if, so for example, if you had a, if you read participating, participatory media use policy, and there's a paragraph in there that's still black, that isn't up for discussion at all. If there's a problem with that paragraph that you don't like and that you think we need to discuss further, you would bring that back another time as a separate adjust, as a separate agenda item to discuss just that policy. But what's on, that polit, whether we like that paragraph or not, whether we approve the green and red changes or not, that paragraph stands. The, also, the only thing we're doing, the only thing we're reviewing under this is the green is being replaced, is replacing the reds. A lot of these, it was just because we changed titles. And so we were having someone responsible who no longer exists in the district by policy. And so changing it to superintendent was important. So focus just on those pieces. And then if there's something else, the other goal of doing a three-year review is then we've all at least read the policies once in our four-year tenure. So, but if there's a paragraph that you're looking at and saying, I really disagree with this part of the policy in the district, what you do is you then put it on the list of things you would like to discuss at a future agenda. And that makes it far more efficient and effective and higher functioning. And then I guarantee you, every August, no matter how many meetings we have in July, there will be a set of them that because the legislature ends in June, I have legally reviewed that we are mandated to implement. And so those are the, the only big changes here are the mandated to implements, and those are legal requirements under statute. Normally, if a policy has a lot of edit to it and it's a significant change, it's gonna be a separate agenda item brought by the person who wants big changes in the policy rather than this, this procedure review. And then a lot of them have no changes. And it's, we just have to say, yes, we read it every three years. So that hopefully will help with that piece of it. Just focus on the colors. Because the only thing you're discussing is those changes. And nothing else is actually up for discussion in this.
Director Heil?
Yeah, and just, just to add to what Marie said, we actually followed that process. We, that's a rule? Okay. So we followed that process that Marie just discussed with BEDB, so the agenda setting. So it came before us. While it was before us, I had a concern. We approved the changes that were already in flight. And then we brought it back to discuss the specific issue that I, I had with it.
One thing that'll be really fun, and I think you'll get a kick out of it. You might need a dolly. Next, SBOR, Peter, Lynette has created a paper version of all of our policy to have for public review. Now, what you have to understand is this is decades' worth of policies for multiple boards. Sometimes we have to change them because there's been a legislative change. Before, we went through the process, which Marie, you were part of, where we had to change everything from superintendent to three chief. Now we're changing everything from three chief back to superintendent. And so I think it would be a fabulous visual tour for the student board to see exactly what it looks like printed out so you could look at the policies. And you'll, you'll be very grateful for whatever homework you have that night when you see that book. So what do you think, Peter? Should we bring them that book and show it to them? I'm thinking we'd need a dolly to move it or not. I don't know if you have a weight restriction of twenty-five pounds with your job or anything.
I'll just have to get, like you said, a dolly and roll it to you guys. We'll make it work.
Director Davola?
Yeah, I have just one clarifying question. For policy JF, which is admission and denial of admission, it says all persons age six. And then we changed it from through to and under age twenty-one. And then we changed it to who have not graduated. I'm trying to figure out why the age is six instead of five because I know that we had just changed. It's statutory?
Constitutional.
They don't have to go to kindergarten.
Oh, gotcha. So we're, this is just what we are required by law to do, but we have chosen to do five through. Got it. Done. You're good. Thanks, Nancy.
That's okay, Nancy. We got to watch your great hair walk up here and walk back up here. Any other comments? Would you guys like to read all those policies? No? Yeah, just read the ones that are highlighted. And of course, I think you're gonna end up with iPads and you'll get a chance. And a lot of this is posted online. So prior to attending a board meeting, as you go through the consent agenda online, you can actually pull those up. And that way, if you have questions when they come up, either as a discussion item, you'll be a little bit more familiar. And the good news is it's not a lot of reading if you're just looking through the changes or scanning through the general items. So if there's no objection, this will be moved forward to action. Okay, and there's no second public comment? Any miscellaneous items, which we also discussed during student board? Okay, we are adjourned at eight ten PM.